Okay, well, since we have a great number of firefighters here tonight, and I'm gonna take things, I'm gonna use my prerogative to take things a little bit out of order, and instead of going through the public comment and approval of minutes, I would like to go right into the recognition, because I think that's a really important event tonight, and I'd like to welcome to the podium Chief McCarthy.
Thank you, the Chairman. Did you know that nearly, on average, 326,000 Americans suffer out of hospitals setting cardiac arrests? The average survival rate is 10.6 percent, and survival with good neurological function is 8.3 percent. Nearly one in three victims survives when the arrest is witnessed by a bystander. On Tuesday, July 16, 2019, at 12:14 PM, the North Andover 911 Communications Department received a call for a woman having chest pain. North Andover Fire Department Ambulance One, staffed with firefighter EMT Corey Premus and firefighter EMT Nicholas Martin, along with North Andover Police Department Officer Julie Nigro, were dispatched. Upon arrival, the crew of Ambulance One found a cool, clammy, and diaphoretic 68-year-old female with chest pain radiating to her left shoulder. The crew assisted the patient's vital signs and administered 325 milligrams of aspirin per the protocol. As the crew was about to move the patient from her living room chair to a stair chair for extrication to the ambulance, the patient became unresponsive and turned ashen. Premus and Martin, along with Nigro, immediately lowered the patient to the ground, assessed the patient for a pulse and breathing, which both were absent. Premus, Martin, and Nigro immediately began providing high-quality CPR and applied their automatic external defibrillator, the AED. The AED analyzed and indicated a shock. A shock was delivered, and the patient experienced a return of spontaneous circulation. Upon the arrival, the launch General Hospital Advanced Life Support Unit. The patient was breathing on her own and had a strong radio pulse. This call is a true reflection of the American Heart Association's cardiac chain of survival, in which our community's first responders were able to apply their training and made a difference. The patient has since been discharged from the hospital and is doing well. It is great honor that I present firefighter Premus, firefighter Martin, and Officer Nigro with the lifesaving accommodation bar for their efforts that day with the successful resuscitation of one of our town residents. If I could have the... Deputy Rowe is going to award the pins. If we could have firefighter Nick Martin, firefighter Corey Premus, police officer Julie Nigro. And again, you know, we just wanted to recognize, you know, they do good work every single day, both police, fire, public safety, and we just thought this was a special event, and we just wanted to recognize these people, and again, they do it, they do it every day. Not to this extent sometimes, but we're awful proud of them, we're proud of what they do every single day, so, thank you again.
And so are we too.
Thank you.
Would you just comment just real quickly, because I've talked to you and noticed that we had a new defibrillator at Town Hall, and I think you had said something that we have them everywhere now?
Yeah, if, I'm gonna have Jeff DeShane come up also. Jeff's our new EMS coordinator.
Okay.
So Jeff actually was successful in getting a grant for automatic defibrillators to put in town buildings. We actually chose not to use that grant, it was cheaper to purchase them without going through the grant, believe it or not, so the town actually, with the assistance of the former town manager, we were able to do that. So Jeff went along, why don't you just explain what you did?
Good evening. So in working with Chief McCarthy and Mr. Mailer, they came together and they decided that they wanted to form an AED committee with different department heads from across the town. It was represented by someone from the library, someone from the Stevens Estate, someone from DPW, Chief McCarthy, myself, Brian Legas, who's the Director of Public Health, as well as the town public health nurse. We got together on several different occasions, we looked at different manufacturers, and we felt that it was important that we have one universal AED across town. So the committee made a recommendation, we put together an actual presentation packet to Mr. Mailer, and we decided to go with the, what we call the Life Pack Express. At that time, the town came forward and purchased 20 AEDs at that time. So each public building now here in the town of North Andover has an AED, under the direction of Acting Town Manager Lynn Savage. She requested that the Fire Department start doing some public CPR training. We've offered several classes here at Town Hall, we do have some classes scheduled at the public library, and then we're also gonna be offering classes over at the DPW Department as well.
That's great.
Excellent. So before we all depart, though, I do have a few certificates I'd like to present. And I know, you know, you guys, all you firefighters and first responders, police officers, I know you, you, this is all part of your job, and I know you guys don't usually like recognition, but to us in the public, it's amazing, and we really appreciate all the work you do, and, you know, the lifesaving efforts, the firefighting efforts, I know we had a major fire in town last week, that we had all of our resources out there, so we thank you for all of that. And, you know, once in a while, we get to give you a little bit of honor, a little bit of recognition, and we really respect that and enjoy that, and we wanna make sure we recognize you guys when things like this occur. So I'm gonna read one of these, but I'll put all the names in here, so I don't read each one of them. I would, if you guys want to sit down, but I don't think you want to sit through that. So firefighter Corey Premus, firefighter Nicholas Martin, and officer Julie Nigro, for your exemplary actions on July 16, 2019, at which time you and your colleagues performed CPR and successfully resuscitated a woman who was suffering from a heart attack. The North Andover Board of Selectmen commend you for your lifesaving response, knowledge, and effort in assisting a person in distress. You are a credit to yourself, the North Andover Fire Department, and Police Department, and the town. Thank you on behalf of the town of North Andover, presented by the Board of Selectmen, August 26, 2019. No further assistance. I'll be assisted. Thank you. So I'll give you guys time to filter out. It's the first time, I think, you've made it through without a call.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
They'll be running down the stairs in a second.
We will.
Thanks, Cam.
Oh, we dropped something.
Wow. That really cleared the room.
Nothing like a good meeting to clear the room.
Yeah. All right, moving right along, public comment. Do we have anyone for public comment? Just come up to the podium, you don't have to raise your hand.
Hi again. Ellen Mosier, 137 Cara, and a trustee of the Osgood Hill. I just wanted to make one comment on the minutes, and to make a correction, it's Mosier, M-O-S-I-E-R. M-O-S-H-E-R is Giles Mosier, who was the president of Bay Bank way, way, way back, so no relation. And I wasn't here just to advertise I had a business in local, in North Andover. I think I had a pretty important statement to read, even though it wasn't taken as a formal document. I'm still waiting to hear from you to have a discussion moving forward. But I do have one thing I would like to read, to pass out. We have a schedule of meetings that we have tried to post, and we have been refused, as well as refused to see our financials from the estate year-end and to date. So my request again is to please receive those by email, so I can review them with the board at our next meeting on September 4. It will take place at the Stevens Estate at 8:30 in the morning. And the following is some schedule that I would like it to be posted, or I have to go to Town Hall and use a thumb tack. But also, as part of the statement I read last time, it is still very much true that the fact that I reiterated needs to be spoken again. The trustees of Osgood Hill is the correct name that was voted in by the Board of Selectmen into Town Meeting. We are a true board with the warrant article enlisting us to provide responsibilities over the care, management, and fiscal oversight, including all land and buildings on the Osgood Hill. So we would like to move on, we have plenty of things on our planning board of marketing and events to bring more people up there. We also wanted to embellish a little bit on the liquor license, it was just a simple statement in the statement I gave you, but to recognize in discussion afterwards was the fact that Ray Santilli and Mark Reese had gone to the Legislative after the Board of Selectmen approved it, after the town, the trustees of Osgood Hill approved it, for the state legislative to approve it, and to then go with a petition home rule to the Legislative, which then approved it again, as well as the governor signed it. It went before Town Meeting. So the trustees of Osgood Hill, the establishment of the Enterprise Fund, as well as the liquor license, is still very much in effect, and we would like to move forward, and I look forward to having a conversation, so that there aren't these bumps in the road continuing. Somehow, town administration doesn't feel we should post, we shouldn't have meetings. We have every right to have meetings. The quorum, even though we have three people, we're waiting for appointments, we know of several people that have come forward to us saying, "We've applied to be on the board, we all have the interest of making the preservation, the commission from the historical, and to move forward and be as successful as we can." It was said at another meeting that it was similar to a search for town manager and, let's say, a superintendent. I have to kindly and respectfully disagree. The people that are put on a board such as the trustees of Osgood Hill could have some diverse ideas, et cetera, but our main objective is to preserve, as the warrant has said, and to care and fiscally be prudent in overseeing the Stevens Estate. So look forward again, I'll wait another two weeks to see if I hear from someone, but we would like to sit down, and you're welcome to come to the meeting on September 4, and any of the others. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, move to government reports. Update on the downtown, oh, wait a minute, we gotta do minutes, I'm sorry. Approval of minutes.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the open session minutes of August 12, 2019 as presented.
And, and as amended with the correct spelling.
And as amended with the correct spelling, thank you.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? All right, government reports. So, so we've got the recognition, government reports. Update on downtown improvement plan. Jean?
She's a double-headed gentleman.
Do you think, Jean, I have a standard answer?
So, it's not a tremendous update, because we're just getting started on this initiative, but I do wanna provide a little bit of background. Obviously, this is coming out of the recently adopted master plan, where a number of goals and strategies relating to improving the downtown were identified. And with that, I've really grouped the master plan into common themes, because the goals aren't specific to the chapter, they're usually spread across many chapters. And what I'd like to point out is, there's 14 goals that I consider common themes related to the downtown, nine of which are in the transportation chapter of the master plan, two are in economic development, and so this really is intended to be a real comprehensive look at all the downtown, in terms of circulation, parking, aesthetics, connectivity, wayfinding. So the goals were really broad and spread across economic development, land use, facilities, transportation, and open space. The, the intent of the downtown improvement is really to advance the implementation of the master plan within the downtown improvement master plan. The town has contracted with Beta, who's a professional engineering and landscape architect firm, to help develop the plan. The approach will build upon the extensive community outreach. As you know, we all read the plan, we all had input in the plan, but it vastly came from community outreach and the public forums that we had, and so it'll build upon that as the baseline for the goals that were established. The master plan development included an advisory committee, it was, you know, a really every-other-week type of committee that really took all the information in and were really helpful in getting public outreach, getting their networks, it was a very diverse group of residents. For this, we've established an ad hoc committee. It's not as a significant effort, where it's really one chapter of the master plan as opposed to the seven chapters. The ad hoc committee is similar to, we had, some people here, the downtown improve, I'm sorry, the downtown parking committee was established before economic development moved from Osgood Landing to here. Much more informal, maybe monthly, was really a check-in with, you know, information, give comment, and that's more what the role of this committee's gonna be. The, the important thing is, again, their networks, so I will... The committee consists of Chris Palermo, who's the president of the North Andover Merchants Association, and he owns Blue Dog Pet Care, Chris Camboras, who owns 44 and 73 Main Street, and Heavenly Donuts, Ann Messina, owner of 109 to 123 Main Street and Wine Connection, David Mermelstein, who owns 100 Main Street, he's a property owner of a six-unit building on the corner of Cleveland and Main, Tanya Hotford from RCG East and West Mill Development Manager, John Bojazzy, the town engineer, and myself. And throughout the master plan process, these people all had, you know, really good input, they were involved, they have obviously invested money in their properties. Chris Palermo is, is the owner of the one across from Brad Street Redevelopment on Main Street, so eyes on Main Building, so he's just put a significant amount of money into that building, and for a year now, he's been asking me, "When are we gonna start implementing the master plan?"
Not Chris Palermo.
I'm sorry, Chris Camboras, you're right, I apologize. So really active residents, business owners, and involved, so. So in addition to this group, which we've had one meeting, really for, just to introduce this downtown and talk about their roles, the next step is, this Wednesday afternoon, we've scheduled pocket meetings at 3 o'clock and 5, and this, again, follows a very similar path to the master plan, where we had core assessment meetings. In those meetings, we identified really key people for each of the seven chapters. For this one, one meeting is primarily with town staff, so to get, you know, police comments, you know, parking, enforcement, things like that, some of their challenges and some opportunities. Fire, Department of Public Works, facilities maintenance, planning, health, conservation, and elder services. So they'll all meet in one meeting, and then a second meeting was scheduled at 5 o'clock, and those are representatives from the Commission on Disabilities, Council on Aging, Cultural Council, the Chairs of the Machine Shop Village, Historical Commission, ConCom, Planning, and Board of Selectmen. I will say that I've invited Dick, but he cannot attend, and so I would encourage, if you guys come to an agreement, if somebody could be there to represent Board of Selectmen, I would really appreciate it. These meetings will help the...
When was that meeting, Jean?
Wednesday at 5 o'clock. This Wednesday. I know, I apologize for short notice now, but, and there's a 3 o'clock, so either one, if, if somebody has availability. So the meetings will help the consultants gain local knowledge that cannot be gleaned from existing condition plans, study data, you know, it's really insight from stakeholders that, that, you know, have a voice to be heard. The intent of these meetings is to gain insight into the site's potential and constraints, as well as an in-depth understanding of the land use issues, connectivity to nearby properties and recreation facilities, historic resources, scenic resources, access and circulation, traffic and safety concerns, design constraints, stormwater and utility concerns, and the existing operation and function of the project site. So it's really to get, you know, what, what you might not know, looking at stormwater drainage plans of Main Street, so that as they go into existing conditions, really start to document what they see, they've had the insight from some key stakeholders. So from that point, it's all about data collection. They look at all our existing reports. Some may remember in 2007, we did a downtown improvement plan, some of the bumpouts are reflective of that, the brick sidewalks, the crosswalks. So it's really, you know, taking what was done in the past, what resulted from those plans, and starting to build on that. So that will take about a month, I expect, probably by the end of September, we'll have that baseline existing data. And then the next step will be community meetings. So again, this is all about public outreach, getting public forums, we'll follow that same path. We anticipate three community workshops that will be held between December and March. In between those workshops, it's really revamping it, so what did we hear, what did they like, not like, and, and start to make refinements based on that information. And then ultimately, I hope for April or May, that it would be the final downtown improvement plan.
So, yeah, Jean, there was a grant that we were applying for a while back to sink the telephone lines and redo the sidewalks, I mean, what ever happened with that?
That is one of the goals and objectives in the master plan. DPW is actually working with that, and so John Bojazzy is the lead.
Okay.
So it will be within this plan, we'll certainly, you know, do what we can to move that along, but John is by far the owner of it, and I know he's working on it, it's, it's gonna take a lot of time. That's the one thing he's expressed to me, this isn't a one-year, two-year, it could take up to four years, but I think getting it, you know, into this will help make it more public and get it over.
Okay, yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jean? Well, while you're there, later on in the agenda, we have a senior center update. Would you prefer to do that now, or would you wanna wait until we get to that section? I mean, I'm perfectly fine with moving the agenda item up if you don't wanna stay here all night long. What are your thoughts? Were you...
That's why I didn't know that Jean was giving you...
Oh, okay.
I, I...
Well, maybe you can sit there while we go through.
I'd be happy to.
Were you gonna give an update? No, you didn't. I mean, I know, one of the things we needed to work on is the color scheme, right?
Right. So I wanted to ask you about that, and then just, just mention about the other parcel of land that...
Right, that's been kind of in discussion since...
Yeah, yeah, so, do you want me to...
If you wanna give a quick update, and then we can, you know, discuss it among ourselves and/or ask questions, whatever.
Okay, so, back in January, when some preliminary plans were shown at the Board of Selectmen meeting, Andrew had just mentioned that this other piece, when Megan was giving the presentation, she showed the property, the donated land, and then she showed where the parking was, that was another piece of land that the developer had acquired. So Andrew had, had mentioned towards the end of that presentation that they would, the town was looking to maybe lease that property, but there wasn't anything that was discussed after that. And so when the presentation was made in April with the finalized plans, I think it was mentioned again, but it was never really talked about with the board, because it's a little premature, because there is no lease or any kind of agreement. The plan was to go through the approvals and see if it can get approved, because if not, it's gonna have to go and be condensed onto that one law. And then after that, the town manager, you know, you guys would talk about how you wanna handle that piece of property.
So at this point, there's been, I mean, this all kind of came to light, because at the zoning board meeting, there was a fairly robust discussion...
Right.
About this lease that really doesn't exist.
Exactly.
And there was numbers that were being conveyed on amounts and everything else, but still this lease doesn't exist, this, this has never occurred.
No, no, there's no agreement in place right now. I mean, they've talked about it, it's been talked about, but there's not even anything in principle or a memorandum of understanding. The plan was, let's get this through, because it's, as you know, a unique situation where we're, we're going at the same time as a developer jointly to get this done, so the plan was, let's see, you know, if we can get this approved, and then we'll figure out how we're gonna, how we wanna address the land that the developer identified that we are using our department.
So I did go back and listen to the various meetings, and on the 28th, there was a very quick mention of a lease, and then...
But no numbers.
Not even anything other than just the word lease, and I don't think...
But we wouldn't negotiate that publicly.
Yeah, right, no, and I don't think anybody, any of us really...
Well, it was talked about at the zoning meeting, and it was, it was so much shocking.
But that, yeah, but that was no numbers that we really agreed to or even discussed.
I know, that's why it was shocking.
None of us had really discussed it at all, and so the, the word lease was said, and I don't think any of us even picked up on it, really, it was so quick, and then subsequent meetings, I watched typical meetings since then, and I, I didn't hear it mentioned again. I mean, of course, the property was always talked about, the additional parcel, but we never really talked about how that parcel came about or how it would come about. So somehow during the zoning board meeting, there was numbers, and I don't know where those numbers came from, or even why that, I didn't see why that discussion was, was even teed up. I know one of the members of the zoning board brought it up, but I don't know where that information was...
I think the developer mentioned it.
The developer mentioned what he paid for.
Yeah.
Well, he mentioned what he paid for.
And he purchased it in November, so it's been, I'm pretty sure it's November, I looked it up.
I believe it was November, yeah.
Yeah, so I think from our perspective, to hear this and know that it was purchased, and of course you, you just don't purchase something overnight, it usually takes a couple of months before you purchase something, negotiate. So it was a little bit shocking that we heard about it at the zoning board, and numbers were, were put forth, whether they should have been or not, but I think, I think we need to discuss it, and I think if there was, if this was something that was going to be put forward, it probably should have been put forward at our more recent town meetings for the public to weigh in on it, but if we're not ready, we're not ready, but it was a pretty substantial number in a lease, and from my perspective, I, I think that we need to be very careful that it doesn't give the appearance that we are averting the, the public bidding laws in prevailing wage, because a municipality, as a way to avoid that, there, and it has happened to some municipalities, that they won't, someone else will buy it, the municipality will lease it as a way of not having to pay, and I'm not a fan of prevailing wage, so believe me, I'm, I'm not, I think it makes the taxpayer pay a lot more for construction and projects than they probably should have to, but we need to have a discussion of that. Did it, would this pass the inspector general or the attorney general, because if, what was discussed at that meeting was that we would lease it for a period of time, and then perhaps at the end of it, acquire it through a purchase of a really nominal amount, and that, to me, I think, it needs to be looked at, we need to have a definite answer. I did speak to town council about it, and we went back and forth on, I said, "You, you really need to put it past the inspector general and the attorney general," because what has happened in other municipalities, when they do that, they're to get into a real lot of trouble, and the building's already built, and it's a disaster, so...
I think the thing to keep in mind here is that nothing has been discussed.
That's right, other than it was discussed at a public meeting, but it was...
It was, but that was not official, that was nothing, those were numbers that were thrown out, I mean, nothing's been, to my knowledge, nothing's been negotiated.
No.
It has to go through us, so there's nothing that's been really agreed to in, in any way, so I agree with you, you know, we meant to make sure we gotta go through all the proper steps, but I think at this point, I just don't want people to think that this, this process has moved forward, it hasn't. There was a discussion at the zoning board meeting that was robust, and maybe it went a little bit beyond the scope of the zoning board to discuss that in a public meeting, when they didn't have any kind of a negotiation in front of them, or any, there was no information for them to go on, so I just wanna make sure people realize that that has not been, to my knowledge, this has not been negotiated in any way.
I agree with you in everything that you say, except for the fact that it's, it has been understood, or at least talked about amongst certain groups, and I hate to have it continue in the background as the project moves forward and moves forward, and all of a sudden, we're near the end, and we're sort of in a position where everyone's expecting a senior center, and we have not finalized that.
No, no, I'm glad it came out, I'm glad it came out of the zoning board.
I am too, we, the two of us talked, I said, "Did I miss something?", and the two of us agree that we, we didn't, no. But I just don't want the project to go so far along, and we're at the midnight hour, and we're kind of boxed into making a decision on that.
To that point, on the, on the property that was bought, the additional piece of property, there's just planned to be parking there, right? The building isn't sitting on it.
Right.
It's just the parking.
Right.
And it's the senior center parking, not the apartment parking?
Yes.
It has to go through us, so there's nothing that's been really agreed to in any way. So, I agree with you. You know, we meant to make sure we gotta go through all the proper steps, but I think at this point, I just don't want people to think that this, this process has moved forward. It hasn't. There was a discussion at the zoning board meeting that was robust, and maybe it went a little bit beyond the scope of the zoning board to discuss that in a public meeting, when they didn't have any kind of a negotiation in front of them, or any, there was no information for them to go on. So, I just want to make sure people realize that that has not been, to my knowledge, this has not been negotiated in any way.
I agree with you in everything that you say, except for the fact that it's, it has been understood, or at least talked about amongst certain groups, and I hate to have it continue in the background as the project moves forward and moves forward, and all of a sudden, we're near the end, and we're sort of in a position where everyone's expecting a senior center, and we have not finalized that.
Well, no, I'm glad it came out. I'm glad it came out at the zoning board.
I am too. The two of us talked. I said, did I miss something? And the two of us agree that we, we didn't know. But I just don't want the project to go so far along, and we're at the midnight hour, and we're kind of boxed into making a decision on that.
To that point, on the, on the property that was bought, the additional piece of property, there's just planned to be parking there, right?
Mm-hmm.
The building isn't sitting on it.
Right.
It's just the parking.
Right.
And it's the senior center parking, not the apartment parking?
Yes.
It would be the best flow?
Right. So, it was a better plan, and then when they got to all of the, you know, putting everything on the plan, it was cramming in the parking lot of these spaces onto that one lot. After town meeting, that's when
Right.
This new lot came about.
Right.
So, that's why they got into discussions about, oh, well, we could have a better plan, so it's not all crammed in on the one lot. And that's sort of how it evolved. But it was always the intent that after it went through the zoning and planning process, and we knew that we were good to go, that's when the discussion would happen about, it would be before the ground, anything would hit the ground.
But as an additional point, we don't have to own the parking, right? I mean, it could be, to your point, if, we're not necessarily getting to the 11th hour and then saying, well, now we're stuck. We have to, because our building's sitting on the land.
Unless there's not enough parking.
We can just, well, no, I'm saying, there could still be parking there, and we can just work out a deal with them to use that parking, because we need to have parking. But it's not like, if they don't, you know, it's not like they have, can hold our feet to a fire and say, oh, and I gotta pay us a lot of money because you have to have this because your building's sitting on it. It's not that scenario. It's, it's, okay, maybe we decide we'd just rather own it, so let's work out a deal to, to own it, or, and we take it to town meeting, or we say, no, we don't want to own it. We'll just rent it, lease it, whatever, because we want to have...
No, sure.
I understand that, but I do understand that, but getting back to the fact that they, that parcel was purchased in November, so they must have been at least looking at it for this project long before that, and it's surprising that we would hear about it so much later.
Well, it was the meeting that you said...
Well, it was January.
Because in January, when we had a plan, I mean, when we had, when we looked at plans in our meeting, that was there with the parking. We just didn't ever really talk about it.
I think January 28th was probably the first meeting that it was, the additional parcel was discussed.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, at that point, the word lease did come out, and I just don't think, I think it was kind of mentioned very quickly, and we never really had an opportunity to discuss it any further, that, you know, we were all kind of reveling in the, in the plans, and then that was mentioned, and then I don't think it was mentioned again until much later on, or until the zoning board meeting. I mean, but the parcel was always mentioned. The additional parcel was always talked about.
Exactly.
So, that was always, you know, that was how the building was reconfigured to sit on the property a little bit better, and then it was, the parking would be on that additional parcel. So, that, that's always been discussed, but there was never any notion of a lease or what had to be done.
And it had to be negotiated.
Yeah, no negotiation.
Is your chairman going to attend our next meeting, or if it's the type of sensitive legal discussion about strategy with a lease, either have an executive session or a public session just to
I agree.
Understand, like, what, but like, what's the process?
Yeah.
Because I think we've always talked about it conceptually, like, we're looking at the designs, and I think that you guys have really, that the professional staff on hand that have been working on this have done a really nice job. But I mean, we've never dug into just what T's need to be crossed and I's need to be dotted for that transition. And so, I think that's...
No, I think that's a good idea.
As drives would be. I find that helpful.
We'll, I'll, or we will speak with the, the town attorney and understand whether we need to do that in executive session, or if that can be done in open session, and then we'll put it on the next agenda.
Thank you, that's good.
Okay.
I think if you want to just discuss options, that you could do it just at your regular meeting, because at the next meeting, we're not gonna have any proposed agreement or anything to present.
Okay, yeah, true. So, we just want to get...
So, if you want her to come in, so she can explain, like, like Ms. Medalia was asking about, you know, can you do this? Can you actually lease it, and do you have that authority from the AG or the, like, those things, I think she can come in to lay out the options.
Defer to the, the attorney, whatever she thinks is accurate, or what is bad.
She'll clearly tell us if she knows, if she thinks that's not something that needs to be covered in the executive session. She'll, she'll let us know that. But let's move to, any other discussion on that?
No, that was, that was, we just wanted to know what's going on with that. It was a little surprising. So, thank you for...
The other topic on the senior center was colors, painting colors, which is kind of fun.
This you can get on your, from the meeting of the February 8th, you and I. We just wanted to confirm that it's the white with the black trim.
So, that was shown at April 8th, I think, at a meeting.
Yes.
It was design development. Schematic design had been finished.
Is the bottom part gray on that, or is it just the shadow?
It's just the shadow. So, it's really a white building with black trim windows.
So, it's a classic design.
Yeah.
So, the whole building is...
Does it complement the apartments?
I gave Laurie one picture of that.
Yeah, I did. This is what, so, it does warn you.
That's the intent. We want it to look like...
So, that's not a different color than this?
I don't know. It's a shadow.
Yeah, but it seems like there's a clear...
It does, it does.
There's like a fascia board.
Because it's so very even.
But, yeah, but there's a fascia board that kind of divides it, right? And I would think that would be a natural place to change the color on.
Just to be absolutely sure that it will be...
There's a stone base.
This looks like it's white with gray, when you get this one for the apartments.
The apartments does have...
Right. So, that's, that's what makes it, that's what makes you think that's gray? Because when you look at theirs, there's gray in there, but I think...
Oh, no, this looks gray.
Yeah, it really does.
I mean, but it looks like there's a clear divide.
What I'm saying is, it's, it's the shadow.
Sorry.
So, this is the other, like, angle of the senior center, which shows...
But this has the same type of design, or it has a fascia board?
That's what I'm saying. That's why you would think it's gray on it.
This one is like it's the same color all the way up.
But it wasn't intended to be gray on that. That was the shadow. You would think that when you look at the two of them together. But that's the other view of...
But then, I guess my question would be, why wouldn't it be gray then? Because if the other buildings are like that, why wouldn't we just keep the same color scheme?
I think I would like it different, just to separate that that's the senior center and that's not.
But, but to complement each other.
But to, right, not to be fighting each other. Did you say there was going to be shutters on it?
On this one, you can't see it, right?
It's for this one, shows more of it without the shadow.
Yes, that's true. It clearly is white in this one.
Right.
It's white with the stone base on the bottom, and, and the development has a stone base as well.
I have some past down your iPad. It is, it is a very nice design, though. I will say that. It's classic. It's timeless. And I think that the seniors would appreciate that as well. It is, it's a very nice design.
And I've gone to News and Views, and I've gone to Council on Aging, and showed everybody, and everyone was real favorable. No one said, well, why don't we look at different colors? It was, everybody really liked the white.
Yeah, I can see why.
As far as the multi-family development, John Simons pushed them a little bit, like, look at it, maybe you can do a little better type comments, which is kind of typical. So, I wouldn't say that that's 100% final. What, what I checked with Laurie today is if anybody here has a real strong preference, that I'd want to get that in the discussion as early as we can.
For how it matches the existing development, you mean?
Or even independent of them.
How, for your color.
For the, for the color, independent of them, because they're gonna work to match whatever we do.
So, did I, I was only, I was only half listening because I was trying to dig this up, but you had said that you wanted there to be that distinction that did happen, and I think that's...
It should be, it should be different, but complement.
Yep.
I mean, if ours is all white, and theirs is white and gray, that of course would complement it. You know, if we, so it's white with black windows.
Trim windows, yep.
Sounds like they might need a nice red door to be North Andover College, but, but our...
Well, I liken it to the youth center, which has the red barn, which I think that really helps make that distinctive. So, I agree that if we can bring in a red color to it. But the youth center's all white with that red barn to mimic the form of barn. When you drive down Elm Street now in Andover, that lodge, it gets an assisted live-in building that's been in paper a lot.
Oh, in Andover, yeah.
That's, that's all white. I think it looks really distinct and nice.
It does. It's, it's very nice.
But, but like I said, I mean, you guys certainly weigh in on that, and as early as you can, the better.
I think it looks great. I think that distinction, I, I think it would, complementing but not being identical, because I think that you want the community to understand that that's a community center, whereas the rest of it is private.
It's residential, and residential.
That would be my, yeah, as much as I'd, I'd like it all to match perfectly, that would be the only thing that I think is worth thinking about, that you don't want it to match so that people think they can't access it, because it's just part of that complex.
I believe the Wellesley one had different tones of green, so a darker shade of sage, and then it just went lighter on the way up. And the Walt Ham one was a really dark, nobody really liked Walt. It was a very dark brownish color.
Do our consultants, do they have feedback on, on the psychology behind how a patron might treat a center that matches? In a situation like this, how, how people or the population in general respond to that? If it matches, does, do they then walk away assuming that that facility must be associated with a private development, so it's just the clubhouse? Like, I don't, we have these, they've worked on this a ton of times, and I don't know if they've ever looked at it.
To differentiate it.
I see the picture.
If they, just if they look too similar to, do people just immediately discount it? Do they not look at it?
Well, they have a big sign on it that says, "I'm in the senior center."
Yeah, but they might think it's the clubhouse that goes to a residential housing, because...
But we're gonna have a senior center sign on it in front of it.
Remind me, this where it says the sign, the name, is that, what street is that?
Sorry, girl?
That is Sutton Street.
Sutton Street, okay, good. So, it's, that's really good, because the signage is like on the main street.
I still think it should look a little bit different.
Why, I agree. But I mean, at least the sign is like...
And I think the plans show it a little different. Do you think it should be more different than the...
No, I think it's, I think our building, white, and if they want to do white and gray, that would be great. And I think we should have our own, I do really think we should have our own welcoming front door of some sort.
Yep, I'm a rep. So, the architect, you'll see on those plans, it's also calling it the adult center and adult community center.
I was gonna ask that.
The architect is a really big proponent of that. When I went to News and Views, there was tremendous discussion. So, the chair of the council of aging does not like to be called a senior. He prefers the adult. But I would say the majority in the News and Views meeting that I went to wanted senior center. And again, in April, I said, there's no decision been made, but we need to make this one fairly soon.
When you were doing your, your research, though, with the general population, because right, part of this is that we have, we have our pool of existing seniors. They understand the value of the, the resource.
Yep.
The name changes more just their taste. Us changing the name, though, would that increase the likelihood that more, more people, more residents would take advantage of the services? Like, do they have data that shows? I would think that...
Yeah, I don't know if there's data. Like I said, the architect who's built 35 of these, I believe, is an advocate, and he said that is the trend. When I was in News and Views, it was, I don't want 21-year-olds coming in because it no longer says senior center. It was just different perspectives, I would say, in comments. But we could do a survey if you want. We could do, we could try something like that.
I just think if you had it, I mean, that, my instinct would be what the architect said, which is, I mean, it's about trying to get people, I think back to Ms. O'Brien, when she came and spoke to us a few months ago about this whole concept, I think it was actually at the April meeting. She talked about just the spike of people that are going to be seniors, and the age that she used to define senior is not an age at all that anyone would ever use that word to describe themselves. I mean, I think she used that to six or 65, and that's just not, that's not a word that even 70-year-olds like to use.
Hey, listen, the AARP starts sending you stuff at 49.
I know.
Why don't we just have a survey at the senior center?
Yeah, I think we should let them have a big...
Two names, adult center or senior center, and let them decide. It's their center.
Melissa talked about flashbulb, like, about the entire town.
Or is it, so it's senior center, it's not like senior community center? That sounds a little more friendly and inviting, but...
It was adult community center or adult center. Ours today is just senior center.
I think adult center screams not kids, which is good, but also, I think, doesn't have a stigma. If it's about opening it up to more people, the same services, same programs are gonna be available for the population that's down there.
Yep.
I mean, they already know about everything. They know what's inside those doors. We don't have to entice them to walk through the door. I think that there's a whole population in town that we're trying to cater to that, that would have the similar interests as them, but they just don't ever enter the facility because they don't, that name is itself an obstacle.
You can see that.
The only thing about, I, I agree that, to a large degree philosophically, but if you're in this community, the question is, where's the senior center?
Yeah.
Right? That's, that's the only thing that kind of rings underneath it all. People go, where's the senior center? Where's the senior center? Right? Because that's what it's all referenced to. I, I understand it, you know, adult, you know, preferable in a lot of ways, but if you don't call it the senior center, if you're new to this town, or all of a sudden, you wait, you realize, geez, you know what? I gotta find out what the resources are for the senior center. Where is it? So, I, it's not that you couldn't have a, maybe there's a way to kind of have AKA. That would be a long time. Yeah, but the, right, that's sort of how I...
I mean, I kind of agree. I feel, I feel like seniors might feel like they're losing something if we take away the senior center and come up with an adult center. I mean, that's their place, and if you're 62 and you don't think yourself a senior, well, that's, that's fine, but you can still look and see what there is there and say, oh, I actually really like that stuff. I'm gonna go, whatever. I mean, I...
And of course, we feel like the fitness center and the outdoor patio.
It sounds like a fun center.
Sounds like it's...
Yeah, I don't know. I don't...
Some other...
I'm not a fan.
There's adult daycare, too, that it might get a little bit mixed with.
That's what I mean. It, it does...
Yeah, that's my concern.
But I think senior community center is a little bit sort of a compromise of the two, and it's kind of fun.
I like it in the word community, and I think that's an important word, senior community center.
Phil has a good point, though, on some of that. I think the way to get at that is how we also communicate it out, right? So, that then is on the folks that run the center and us as a town to help people understand what's there, and the, and the scope and so forth, that it's for adults of age, senior, 60, whatever it is, right? And I think some of that's in the messaging of it, as much...
I totally agree. I don't think you go somewhere because of name. You go there because you sell marketing, and you think those are great programs, and you want to do those programs. I mean, if we want to make sure 55-year-old people go there, then we need to have things that 55-year-old people would enjoy doing, going on there. It doesn't matter what it's called.
Right. I think the fitness center and the outdoor patio area really lends to maybe getting a little bit younger demographic there.
It does. It looks like, it really looks almost like a, like a country club kind of a setting, you know? And I love that.
Yeah.
You know, and, and they have geared it to more activities outside with picnics and watching and that kind of stuff, is the stuff that they talk about.
Okay, so, we'll leave it up. We're gonna let the seniors decide? We're gonna let the, not the seniors, I should say, the adults, who have seen that go there and decide what they want to call it, and let them, you know? Name it? I don't think we should name it. If they're center.
I agree.
You know, let them name it.
I mean, they should name it. We should take a quick pass at it, to make sure it's not a conflict.
Actually, it's our center, too.
I was gonna say.
I'm there.
According to our director, you know, senior's a very, a low threshold, and I won't...
Like I said, the AARP's 10 to 79.
Some others at the table.
There may be some that are at the table.
That's something worse, so I'm not...
I still think, I still think it should be the folks that are, that regularly attend and go there should have a voice in what they, what they want it to be called.
So, we put up with four names, if we just do a checkbox next to the four names, and have Irene, just as people come in, check out the one that's...
Yeah.
Maybe we've kind of done it to adult and senior. It can be any variation of...
Adult community center and senior community center.
Or senior community center. Just stick with those two.
Yeah, because that'll also make it too complicated. We could get like, three votes for this one, two votes for this one, four votes for this one.
I like senior.
Opposite. Yeah.
Okay, any other comments on that? All right, let's move on to, um, thank you, Jean, very much for sticking with us on that one. All right, we're gonna move to licensing, to our motion.
Uh, move to an open meeting of the North Endover Licensing Commission.
Second.
All those in paper?
Okay. Uh, the first thing we have is approvals for one-day wine and malt liquor licenses for the Rock the Block event on September thirteenth, which is gonna be really awesome. I've seen tons of marketing already going out about that, so...
Oh, and, and the robocalls.
Oh, wow, I got that. Um, all right, so there's five or six, five, no, six, um, one-day liquor applications in our packet. So I did have a question. I don't know, Lori, if you can answer these. I probably should have sent this before our meeting. But, um, not all of them have a checkbox and the certificate of insurance and copy of tip certificate checked, which I would think we would want to make sure we have that.
From what I understand, you have checked on that. Everything that has been submitted that is required, there wasn't any...
Okay, that was the question.
So they should, yes, have submitted their tip certification and their certificate of liability insurance, but I can double-check what's...
All right. Maybe we can just make our motion contingent upon both of those being present for all vendors, because a couple of them just aren't checked, just to be sure.
Yeah, we'll just get a report from Suzanne if they're all, all set.
Um, otherwise, you know, I thought all this looked, looked good. Place fire and building, oh, gave their okay, so any other thoughts or questions from you guys?
Nope, looking forward to it.
All right, move that the Board of Selectmen acting as licensing commissioners approve the one-day, um, uh, one-day one and malt liquor licenses presented for Rock the Block event with confirmation of required licenses certificates on September thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, from now six to nine?
Yeah, that's something we need to, I'm gonna take that up under, um, we'll talk about that. It's not on the agenda, but maybe we'll just discuss it and maybe fill in the agenda that next time.
So it would be, what, subject to...
Because we, the event is six to nine, but we only approved, um, the street closure from...
Six to nine.
Oh, wait, but the, your robocall went off at three to ten, right?
Oh. That's what they sent out today, the street closure, but the actual amount of liquor licenses is six to nine.
Right. Yes, thank you. So, six to nine, but they sent out a robocall that the street would be closed from three to ten, which we didn't approve that. So we'll probably have to put that on our agenda for next meeting.
Because they don't want cars parked there.
Right, they want to get an early jump on that, but we didn't approve that yet, so we need to go back and fix that.
Aye, second. Selectmen, no police motion.
Okay, so, motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? Uh, have we talked about how the street would be kind of, I guess they'll just be...
The committee did work on that, it's just...
It's going to be imagined where the farmer's market is, on that section of First Street, and it's, that's going to be court-owned off.
It is.
Yeah, it has to be. Unless, yeah, that has to be, um, the case, because they have to be, I believe the term they kept using was sequestered. So we need those folks who are actually there purchasing alcohol to not be walking around the whole event.
Right, that's what I was asking. So they are gonna be like in a sequestered area with like, whatever, fencing.
Be fenced in, right?
Yeah, with the orange.
Yeah.
Twenty-one only inside, all that.
All right, that was the only discussion I wanted to have, was about that. So, any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next item is a request of St. Gregory's Church for one-day wine and malt liquor license for their annual picnic on September eighth from twelve to six. This, I think, we've done every year, so not really a surprise.
Madam Chair, I'll move approval.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, next we have a request of Stephen Coolidge Place for one-day wine and malt liquor license for picnic concert on September fifth from five to eight, and a waiver of the police detail. And they gave, um, an explanation of a low number of attendees and, and actually asked, um, Lieutenant Lannan if that was fine to have a police detail, and he confirmed that without attendance, he's fine with that, so I have no concerns, I guess, if he has no concerns.
So I would, I would move approval with, um, Dan Lannan's recommendation, Lieutenant's recommendation.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, next we have a request of Smolak Farms for five one-day wine and malt liquor licenses for fall festivals from ten AM to five PM on September seventh, twenty nineteen, September eighth, twenty nineteen, September twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen, and September fifteenth, twenty nineteen, and September twenty-first, twenty nineteen. And, for this, I think the police detail definitely makes sense. These things are very crowded, so...
That's very busy.
Um, and then the fire department, obviously, you know, wants to make sure the exit and egress remain open and unobstructed, um, which I think they'll, they typically do, so... Okay, we had a motion for...
And where are these going to be held? Are these gonna be in the tent?
Oh, these are in the tent, yeah.
In the tent, okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the five-day, five one-day wine and malt liquor license for fall festivals from ten AM to five PM on September seventh, September eighth, September fourteenth, September fifteenth, and September twenty-first, two thousand nineteen.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, and then, and then we have a request of Merrimack College for liquor licenses for, um, the following events. An all-day liquor license for reception at Cassia Hall Lawn on September twelfth from six to eleven. And wine and malt license for a block party. It's on the Sackwich parking lot on September thirteenth from ten to five. Eleven, do we... We usually have events that go to eleven there?
On a Thursday night?
Yeah, it seems... Is that Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, Thursday, because the thirteenth is the Friday.
That seems a bit late.
Thirteenth is, no?
I can say it's a neighbor, it's late.
I was gonna say...
But it's inside, though, right?
No, it's in a, um...
It's in the lawn.
The lawn, well, City Hall, Cassia Hall Lawn.
But that's, it is deeper in their campus, so it's not like...
It is deeper.
Well, actually, I guess I shouldn't, how close?
It's in the...
Let's ask the neighbor.
Well, I mean, again, in Los, one fourteen, and like that, once it's that deep, they don't hear it. Normally, like, they are right across the street.
Well, I guess it's, you know, if there's a band, that sort of thing, I mean, that's when the sound gets amplified.
But they would need an entertainment license for that, right?
So that...
And they've not, have they requested that? Or am I missing...
No.
No.
So that's the, I mean, just, as I say, living in the neighborhood, that's the difference. When there's a band, then the volume goes up. If it's just sort of an outdoor deal, I don't think it really bothers me.
Depends on the wind.
But I do think that there's a timeframe for, for that, that we set up with Merrimack College when, when we gave them the license, and we have to check that. There were some times, it's a standard part of the license for the campus.
So I can make a motion that we table that one until our September ninth meeting. It's not gonna give us much time before that, but we could get a clarification from Merrimack and maybe, or we could just condition it until nine PM, and then let them reapply.
Or we can condition it up to the discretion of the Chair.
Oh, and then let me see if they have a, um...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Whatever you guys...
But if people want to wait...
I mean, we could do it till nine, and then they can respond, and we can change it in the next meeting also. Either one, I mean, I'm fine, either way. Till eleven?
I just don't...
I feel like inside, maybe, but I don't know, outside, I wasn't sure we had.
Yeah, maybe like at some of the functions in the Rogers Center or something like that, it might be, because it's inside.
Right, I mean, yeah.
But this is on the lawn, this is on...
And it's, it's not a Friday or Saturday.
Right, that's the other thing.
That's the other thing. It's a Friday or Saturday night.
I get it.
More, even more inclined, but given this is a Thursday night, let's just, let's just confirm it matches the time. And then if, if they, if it's outside of that, then they have the opportunity to address that.
Okay.
But what you can do with the Chair, if, if you want, let's approve it, and then if it's up to nine, and then if they want it outside, and that's a possibility, then you've got discretion to make that decision.
Okay.
Right, so I'll make a motion that we approve the all liquor license for reception at Cassia Hall Lawn on September twelfth, two thousand nineteen, from six to nine, with the discretion of the Chair, that the, um, to have a discussion with Merrimack, I guess, to, I mean, ensure that, you know, they'll be shut down by, or, I mean, what are we gonna check?
Well, we're gonna check what the license that they currently have for the whole campus.
Okay. I should validate their license, and then...
And if it's troublesome, then we bring it back to the next meeting.
Yeah. I mean, so are you guys fine with me extending it to eleven if they confirm there's gonna be no music and their license, their broader license allows them to have something till eleven?
I'm okay with that, knowing that we have someone nearby, that if, that, if that breach of confidence gets, if that's, if we get, you know, a breach of confidence here, that, you know, in the future, that won't happen.
Yeah.
It does say there's a tent. I imagine they're probably gonna put panels up if there is a tent, given that it's an evening event.
Oh, there's a tent? Did I miss that? Sorry.
Yeah.
Well, tents don't really hold...
So will there be use of a tem- will there be use of a temporary tent? I just, I, also, it's a, it's described as a reception, and every town around us has had trip, Tripoli found in the past twenty-four hours, so I mean...
Has what, sorry?
Has had Tripoli found, so...
Oh.
You know, box for just what we've been meeting.
Methuen to...
Announced one.
And Andover, Andover...
I just realized on here that the chance for the other event is reversed. It says ten to five. It's actually their application's five to ten.
Yeah, the application's correct, except the agenda item.
Yeah.
Oh, ten to five, not eleven to five?
No, it's five to ten.
Oh.
Five PM to ten PM.
Oh.
On Friday night, okay.
Right.
The, the next one, you're saying?
Yeah, because right now, we're just talking about this, this one.
Right. Well, the next one, if we were gonna move to talk about that briefly, they say, they have food trucks on here. Do we know what food trucks there, because they don't have a, I mean, I guess, do they know, have we... Oh, right, 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 sorry. I always have to remind myself. Food truck discussion is very difficult to keep in your head. It's a very complicated thing, the food trucks. Um, okay. So back to, you made a motion for...
Uh, for the full time, as requested, six to eleven, uh, with the discretion of the licensing Chair to, um, follow up on their, their existing license, and then to ensure that they have, you know, that there will be no music, and that there'll be, you know, within a reasonable sound limit during that time.
Well, wait, you were gonna make it nine.
I thought it was six, yes.
You're gonna make it six to nine, and then at my discretion, I can extend it to eleven if their license says, the broader license gives it...
Six to one, half thousand and the other, okay, I was gonna say you could ratchet it back. But, okay, we'll make it six to nine, and then you can extend it to eleven if you're satisfied in their, in your findings.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Second then.
Right.
Right, okay.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Now, the next one is, um, on the Friday from, sorry, what'd you say, five to ten? PM. I have a motion.
Uh, move that the Board of Selectmen acting as licensing commissioners approve the request of Merrimack College for an all-alcohol license for a reception at Cassia...
Nope. Sorry.
Sorry, I interrupted you.
Yes, ma'am.
You guys typically do them as one motion, so I put it in as one motion, so you just want to make the second.
Okay, uh, for, let's see, for block party at the Sackwich parking lot on September thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, from five PM to ten PM.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
And then discuss, okay, so in discussion on this one, this says, um, block party, so maybe that, but there will not be a temporary tent. I guess we obviously know music, since there's no entertainment license being... Oh, no, it says music on the chart, actually. I didn't see that before, because it's so dark, but in the corner, it has a music section. So...
That complicates things.
So they have an entertainment license that they can already, that they can use for that, or they need to apply for one, or is that only if it's live and if it's like an DJ, it doesn't matter? I don't...
I think any music amplified.
Unless they have...
Right.
The top desk, music, they might, but I don't know.
Okay, so we need to confirm on this one whether or not they have an entertainment license. If not, they'll have to come back for that. Which I guess you guys can also get, might be discretion to...
Yeah, they definitely have, but they don't say it in the application, but they get it in the schematic design.
Yeah, and they, I mean, they say no generator.
Do we want to just table these until the ninth and get some answers from Merrimack, and make sure we get everything, um, in place?
But this, this is ten PM on a Friday night.
Ten on a Fridays.
And it's also the same evening that we, as a town, are throwing a block party.
True.
Like, literally, from a marketing standpoint, it's a bummer, but whatever. I mean, we are having an event that, that, the cheap...
But the point is, do they have an entertainment license for the, the music outside, though? Or do they need one?
But regardless, though, wouldn't that be something that we have to, as the enforcing authority, address, when they're only requesting right now an alcohol license?
Yeah, I mean, we, we could approve the, um, alcohol license and then just let them know that they need to come back for an entertainment license if they're gonna have live music or any music.
Sure, I'm okay with that.
Yeah. Okay, so the motion was made and seconded for the alcohol license. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Merrimack was never that difficult before.
I know. So Lori, if, um, if you could...
Maybe we need to have a contact.
Look and see if they have an entertainment license, and if not, let them know that they need to come back. All right, and then lastly, we have a request of Smolak Farms for six one-day licenses for the following events in the tent. These are different, huh? Wait. So how can, the first one is a wine and malt license for an engagement party on September eighth from four to nine. But they're having a fall festival from ten to five on September eighth? So that seems like incongruous. There was no additional material attached for this one either in our agenda, so I couldn't look at any details for these, so we might need to just...
Well, where's the engagement party? Is it in the, in the tent?
Says in the tent.
So they're both in the tent.
And the other one said in the tent.
Oh, well, that's an overlap.
Yeah. So we can, I guess, hold off on that, or I don't... I, the Fall Festivals, it seemed odd for that to be in the tent, even though that's what it says, that they're in the tent?
In their application?
Yeah.
It said, "Will there be use of a temporary tent," and it says, "Yes," but they're...
Wait, no.
Yeah, but they can't be wandering around the property with, with alcohol. They have to have something...
Wait, I'm sorry, I thought that I read that it was in the tent. I'm in the wrong one, sorry.
I mean, they do have the capacity, they have multiple events there at one time.
Yeah, they have one in the barn, they have one in the tent.
Yeah, definitely, but I thought that they both said the tent.
The engagement party probably is in the barn.
Yeah, they, these events are to be held under the tent. That's what it says on the ones for the Fall Festival.
And it says that under the engagement party.
And it says on the engagement party. So one of them's obviously incorrect. I mean, one must be in the barn.
They're not specific enough. Could be a small tent.
Right, another tent, different tent.
Right.
And we cannot, um, post that to our next meeting, because it's, happens before our next meeting.
Well, that one's definitely gotta be up at the discretion of the Chair. Okay, so... You certainly don't want to interrupt an engagement party or a Fall Festival, so in my opinion, this is, it could just be, it's a true statement, but not specific enough. You know, it could be two separate tents, so I would really leave it up to, to your discretion, I can add.
And then we just reach out to them, get clarification, and then we can give you the authority to go ahead and approve it.
Okay, uh, Lori, I'm sorry. Okay. We'll move to the next one. All alcohol license for an employee appreciation barbecue on September thirteenth from eleven to five.
A lot going on that day.
Well, so let me just say, for all the rest of them, there was no supporting material, so I don't really know any details on them.
There's no applications?
Well, in the, in the, um, agenda, there was no link, so I couldn't look at any of the details.
Yeah, there's not hot link.
There wasn't any links.
No?
No.
No?
Oh, shoot, I'm sorry about that. Um, those may probably have the only topic.
Thank goodness for trees.
On, on this one here? Do you want to see it?
Definitely. No, that's the, um, that's the other one, that was the Merrimack College one.
Oh, licensing is never in...
Oh, no, 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 you're right, no, no, this is the right one, this is the right one.
I was gonna say, I was pretty sure it happened.
Yeah, because they included maps for the ones that we just approved.
Sorry, that's because this wasn't submitted.
It was late. It came in like on Friday, but Thursday. Which technically, we shouldn't even be accepting those, when they do that.
While we...
Meaning we got enough notice to put it public, enough notice to put it on the agenda, but not enough notice with the backup material, that's why.
You can, if you, if, you just want to keep the text on, I don't...
Well, this is the one that is in the, in the thing.
No, that one said, no, that one said September thirteenth, nineteenth, twenty-eighth.
No, but you have it right here.
Oh, sorry.
The one, you have one...
Oh, you're right, sorry, sorry.
Do you want, do you want, these are the hot copies, or what, the ones below? It's your discretion.
I think those, those are the ones that are online.
If you have...
Smolak Farm's event, yeah.
It is online, it's just not linked.
Oh, okay.
So you have to just, um...
Can you just email us the link and we can all...
Yeah.
Why is this like... Like, over here, it's the location of the event, it's here, I hear it's here. Is that weird? No, it's a diff, I'm saying, I was comparing it to see, because this, this one says event tent, seasonal event tent, and that just says tent. This is for the other one. Like, this is the one that's on, the one, the Fall Festival, it's on the seventh, and this is the...
It's a different...
Right, exactly.
Fair questions, just pose.
This is just a really good example of why we should be pushing back on these late, late submissions like this, because it really puts a wrench into everybody. I mean, um, you know, this town hall staff shouldn't have to be scrambling, because, you know, people can't get their submissions in on time. We should really be cracking down on these and saying, you know, if you don't get it, you know, it'll be on the next meeting.
Yeah. All right, well... I mean, the rest of them all look good in terms of, you know...
Thank you.
They're the standard. Butlers &amp; Bars has been there plenty of times, you know. The rest of the events are all the same kinds of events that they always have, so I, I'd be fine to proceed with all of them. I mean, I guess I have a question about the one that's seemingly a conflict. I mean, ten to five.
With the description, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think the engagement party wants the Fall Festival as their event.
No, right, so it's, the engagement party's gotta be somewhere else, yeah.
Yeah, it's probably the barn.
If you look in the app, in the application, one says tent and one says seasonal event tent.
So that's probably what we said at the beginning, is maybe probably two tents.
Maybe they have two tents?
Yeah.
Just a little vague.
Just, yeah, just clarify it.
And also, what, um, Lori, I know we've done this in the past, but do you remember the last time we've notified people who are applying for licenses on the timeframes that they need to apply for? And maybe we need to reset anything.
Yeah, Lori and I had the discussion specifically with, uh, Butler's and Bar's, uh, twice.
You had the session with them?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Our challenge, what, we were trying to figure out if there was a way to put a monetary, uh...
A fine.
Fine on it, yeah, a rush fee. And so that's been kind of bandied about, that, that's sort of a slippery thing to deal with, so we're trying to work on just jawboning our way through it.
Yeah, well, the other option is you enforce the rules that we have, and we say no. You know, we don't put them on the agenda. I know that's hard.
Yeah.
But you can't tell me these folks don't know more than two or three weeks in advance that these events are happening. And they're, you know, they're putting the staff here through a wringer to get everything in place and everything within a day, in two days, to get it on the agenda and get everything done. And then we fall into this kind of situation where, you know, things aren't all aligned and you don't have all the materials. You know, I think we, we do this all the time, you know. Just makes sense.
All right, so we will have another discussion.
I do think that the engagement party is in the regular normal tent, which isn't a temporary tent. I think what they're probably doing is erecting a tent at the Fall Festival.
I agree.
That makes sense.
I agree.
At least you communicate to them that they, it would behoove them to have a professional staff representative here. I mean, I think a lot of the questions that we have are just because we're forced to play the guessing game on both ends, where we're rushing, but then there's also not anybody here to walk us through what, what really probably are very obvious answers that, that a representative could answer. I mean, it's one thing where Merrimack College, it's, I understand why they don't send someone every time, because they do so many, but I feel like we often have questions about, about Smolak, and so having their, their manager or their rep from Butler's and Bars or whoever they're contracting with just be present. I mean, I know it's...
Especially if they're having ten items or something, I mean...
Yeah, well, I mean, because it's not, it's not unheard of that we have questions, so I think that that's, even that's an important reminder, because with the exception of two of the events, I mean, certainly maybe three, but, I mean, most of these events are over a month away anyways.
Well, I think Chair Velk, you've got a, got a good point, which is, this is one other way to kind of pull their attention to it. So listen, you know, you put six in front of us here, four of them are kind of Swiss cheesy, and they're wholesome, it's all, you know, you need to come here, thank you for putting them together in a group, that's appreciated, you're looking a little bit down the line, but there's a piece missing, so maybe that's the interim step. Kind of hold them accountable coming in, yeah.
So do you wanna now approve these and have them come in? I mean, at least, I think we need to approve the enga, approve the engagement party, I mean, can't do that to someone.
No, you cannot.
No.
Who are we really punishing?
Yeah, exactly.
And why would we not do the others?
No, I mean, I'm fine to do the others too, but, and then we'll just have a conversation with them and say, from now on, we want them to...
Just tighten it up a little.
Yeah. Okay, so, that being said, let's confirm the fact that they're doing the Fall Festival under some other seasonal tent? Or where exactly they're having, what the tent situation is? I mean, I guess I don't care which tent, I'm assuming there's two tents, but let's, I'm not gonna not approve it, because there's two tents, so let's just make sure we understand what's going on. Okay.
Madam Chair, move approval of the temporary licenses for the timeframes as submitted, the agenda items, um, one through six under item F.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Okay, that's... Okay, and that's all we have.
Motion to move out of licensing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now to consent items. First item is a request for the Police Department to surplus two vehicles, um, I believe, two two thousand fourteen Cruises, number three thirteen and number three twelve, I think, let me just update that. There are two, um, vehicles that have gone beyond their useful life, and they're looking to surplus those two vehicles.
Mr. Chair, move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of Chief Greta's surplus vehicle numbers three one three and three one four.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The next is to accept a donation from the Joseph N. Herman Youth Center, Inc. in the amount of one thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars to the Youth and Recreation Services for scholarships.
Move approval. Second.
And I'd add, add a note that these are scholarships for people to attend, for, for youth in our community to attend the youth center, not academic scholarships.
Yeah, this covered scholarships for members to participate in certain field trips and programs that could not, they could not otherwise afford. Yeah, great stuff. So we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Our thanks to the Joseph N. Herman, Herman Youth Center, Inc. for their continued efforts and donations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, and then we have a request of Joseph Contrada for the use of the Town Common for St. Vincent de Paul Walk for the Poor on Saturday, October twelfth, two thousand nineteen, from nine to twelve.
Second.
Um, what, what date is the Fall Festival, the Marcus Fall Festival?
Last weekend in September. Oh, the weekend after Rock the Block, that next weekend.
Okay, so no conflict there. I know we've had walks before during it, and there was never a conflict anyway, but I just wanted to publish that date. So, um, so do we have a motion? Or you said that?
Yeah, seconded.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ah, moving off consent items, all business, we already talked about the Senior Senate project, any other comments or any thoughts on that before we move on? New business, we have none. Town manager, we have none. We are missing our town manager tonight, she is moving her child into college, so congratulations to her and good luck. Selectmen's updates and comments.
I just, if someone could, and I, I won't do it because I'll get the dates wrong, but all these great things that we have coming up.
So Sarah Brasham, she, she deserves a shout out, so anybody who follows us on social media, or even this evening, she, um, yeah, she kicks butt. So she created a graphic that showed, um, Rock the Block is from six to nine on September thirteenth, so that's a Friday night. There's a farmer's market two days later on September fifteenth, which is a Sunday, from ten to two. At that same time is the artisan market at the Mills, that's the last one of the season, and that's also from ten to two. Um, and then the next weekend is, um, the Fall Festival, which happens on Saturday, the twenty-first. And that happens at the Town Common, and that's put on by the North End Emergence Association, actually, to be frank, the North End Emergence Association is, does three of those four events and is working hand and glove with the, the, um, the chief over at the Police Department to make sure this Rock the Block thing happens, so it's pretty cool. So my, my only request would be that at our next meeting, if it's possible, just get another update on when the public forums would be for people living in the impacted area from the Columbia gas disaster, for them to be able to weigh in on, if you recall, Jim Sanford, that said that there'd be public forums for them to be able to say, you know, do this street at this time, or this is why you should think about not closing this street when that street's closed. And so I know that there's been, like, a lot of additional interest when they heard, when residents heard that that would be an opportunity, and so just to keep that information out there and in their, in their face, just would be helpful to know.
So you're suggesting a separate forum, something, um, that would be hosted by Jim and DPW, or are you suggesting we do it here during our meeting?
So part of, part of the, um, plan for recovery was that we're supposed to be hosting as a community, so DPW are, and/or are consultant, I'm not really sure. We, we, the town, are hosting a forum, at least one public forum, to solicit feedback from neighbors impacted. But we just don't know the date of that yet.
I think Jim mentioned it in his update last time he was here, that they would be doing that. But he didn't have a date.
No, those things haven't settled on yet.
Is it in the minutes?
No.
I don't think he knew the date yet.
Because we, we talked about actually even doing more than one, just so that someone could make. I think there's a lot of interest from people, just based, again, it's just social media activity, but people have been asking about it four months, and Jim's known that we, we were going to go that route and have that public forum, but it'd just be good to get, make sure we don't miss the opportunity to get that date at the next meeting. And then Grog, when does Grogan's, did they already do their forum, do you know?
Yeah, that was last Wednesday, I think.
Last, yeah.
Yeah, last Wednesday.
That was a really good idea to include the neighbors in on that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, we, we, we try to do that for every one of the projects.
Yeah, we do, but still.
The only other thing I would ask is if we could get something up on our social media page, just like an update on when we expect the McAvoy playground to be repaired, because
Oh, yeah.
I know that several of us got contacted by...
Yeah.
Yeah.
What happened there?
So for the second time in six months, it's been damaged.
Vandalized?
Yeah.
The word vandalized when they use, it just isn't, the zip line's not functional, so I actually don't, I just know that I, we had a school committee member contact some of us, and then it was on a forum today on social media from, with a different group of people asking why it was, why it wasn't working, and I, I just know that it was the second time in six months and that a third-party contractor addresses it, but just since several people have asked.
I think in hindsight, if we had to do it again, we probably would not do a zip line, because I believe this is the third time.
If we do a zip line, it has to be able to hold, you know, a teenager, because teenagers are gonna use it.
Or is that what it is?
I'm guessing that it doesn't withstand that kind of use, but if you're gonna have one, it has to, so it needs to.
They asked for it at the Reynolds, when I met with the kids to talk about Reynolds Playground, and I told them, we already had a zip line, and we really don't wanna do it anymore.
Can we investigate putting, making it, rather than just repairing the one that's there, like, getting a sturdier one? You know what I mean, one that will hold more weight or something?
They used to have one that was like a steel beam that they had, the thing that wasn't a zip line.
Yeah, and, yeah, great, like a glide.
Right.
Right, the problem is, you have to get it from the same manufacturer.
Yeah.
Because you can't play the different manufacturers' piece in the middle of a...
Right, so if they don't offer that...
Well, anyway, ask them, maybe they have something.
Well, or we buy another one, and then that one goes to Reynolds.
I, yeah, I don't know. It just seems like if it's breaking frequently, it's, it's just gonna keep breaking frequently.
Not a good product, not a good option.
Could be some very big teenagers.
Yeah. I mean, I got it. I was there with my kids five years ago. I mean, you know, if you're there with your kid and you're, whatever, I mean...
Have to show them how to do it.
It depends on what's used.
There, there are no signs that I believe say weight limit or anything anywhere.
No, there's not, maybe we need to put a weight limit sign.
I think a lot of people refer to it as the Zip Line Park, so when it's...
Yeah.
When it's down, I get it, and so that, that was why I wasn't...
It's a really fun thing, yeah, it really is.
Okay, any other comments?
I would just add, uh, thank, uh, Jim Sanford and crew, uh, paving the drive into the high school, all the returning students, the teachers, parents, much appreciated. And it appears to be strategically bumpy in a way that makes you wear
Yes.
that you're driving up the hill, so, yeah, it was really nice to see, and I'm glad that's done, so, thanks, man.
No zipping through when you're running late.
Anything? Okay, nothing from me. All right, our next meeting is September ninth, two thousand nineteen. So with that, I will hear a motion for adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
You all.